Stay.
Does anybody want to?
She is still thinking.
Was it, or was that the next?
I've got actually more ideas than that.
My thought she.
She, I'm going to Dexter when we're in that part of the, she said she'd leave it. I just hope she asks about Friday.
Everybody rise for the pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Yes.
Molder.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Well, definitely.
Yes.
Anybody want to address the council in public forum? Jim? Go ahead.
I'm here representing my wife and myself. I've come to our attention through your legal counsel, Dave Janet, that sent us a letter regarding my deceased former sister-in-law, my wife's sister, that the city has paid an LLC for the taxes on the property on Broughton Boulevard. My wife and her sister had a previous claim in small claims court against their sister for $10,000. And they attempted to put a lien on that property. But according to Mr. Janet in a conversation today, that was probably prevented due to her having homestead on that property. So there was no reimbursement ever given from Pam Lights to her sisters over that judgment by the court. We have an interest in that property that we would like to pursue with the city if possible to acquire that, repay any amount that the city has expended, and come to an agreement to refurbish and repair that property into a livable state.
Because if the council's got any thought, we can't take any action tonight.
Well, there's a 90-day waiting period due to the legalities concerned, and after that period is expired, then the city has.
Do you have plans to fix it up?
Yeah, we would, yes. That's what we'd like to pursue.
You just got to talk through the process, Dave, and we're.
Right, what would happen? Well, right now, we're in the process of sending out the notice of redemption from a tax sale, which I explained earlier today to the Smiths. The process, I think the letters just went out last week or so, something like that.
Yes, we just received it.
We're 10 days into the process. We've got another 80 days to expire. At that time, we can take the tax certificate into the treasurer's office and exchange it for a tax deed, at which point in time the city would have title to the real estate. And what I suggested to the Smiths was that they present their concepts to the city council. City council would probably send out a request for proposals for a development agreement or some other type of agreement as to rehabilitating the property and placing it back on the tax rules, which I think is everybody's goal in there. So we're early on in the process, but I did invite Mr. Smith to come tonight and present his ideas, at least his interest in the property, to the council. And the council could start developing ideas as to what to do with the property when we obtain title.
About a month upon Pam Lights' death, why, it was winter coming on. I went up and went in the property and unhooked all the water lines and whatever, and the meter and such, turned things off so there wouldn't be damage due to that. And otherwise, it's been totally neglected since then. We did try to keep an eye on the tax situation and thought there would be a share of sale, but we had no notification of that or whatever. In the meantime, that LLC you paid back, paid the taxes on to get this situation going on. They'd bought it, the taxes, so on and so forth. We always did have an interest in trying to acquire this. It's just we weren't up to speed on the process.
Like I tell you, the council doesn't want to own that house. We only did it so it doesn't turn into what it is now.
I understand.
That's all, the only reason we ever did this.
Right, and that's why I was hoping we could.
Well, I don't know, I can work out something.
Something to work out on that.
Yeah, I mean, if you could come up with a plan, a timetable or something, I don't know.
How many, how many years were they delinquent on the taxes? Three years?
The tax, the tax sale we're dealing with was three years ago, and two and a half years have expired since the certificate was obtained by this Des Moines LLC. And I thought it was in the city's best interest to step in and take that. So the city would have some input, control over what became of it, rather than us having to deal with it again in three years.
At the point that I was in there, I surveyed the inside of the house. It's very structurally sound, and the only issue was the roof leak that Pam had neglected. She didn't do anything about while she was alive. And it's done a little ceiling damage in the main living room area. That was the only thing I could find in an old house that's straight and strong. Once the roof was repaired and that ceiling inside, I don't think there's just very much that's to be cleaned up inside, repainting and things like that. But it's nothing major as far as the structural damage.
Well, I think if you could come back to the council and say, the day that we would switch it, if we do do that, you would start doing this, you'd start doing that, so we could see that what's going to happen.
Very well.
We're not interested in owning homes in town. Never have been. We just want to get cleaned up.
Right. I just wanted to express that we do have that interest. We do have a legal monetary interest as well, that we'd like to recoup if possible.
Yeah, as long as it's cleaned up is our big mission, so if you can come up with something like that, I think the council's well worth working with you.
Thank you.
Positive side.
Yeah, during the centering, while, while we're waiting out the 90 days till here in summertime, the city will be mowing that property. So if you just ever see anything up there, we'll take care of it.
Uh, one thing I was wondering, if I could gain access in the next few days or week or whatever, to look it over again and see how bad the damage might be since I was in there two years ago or something.
I don't think we have a key, do we?
Is it even locked?
We've never been in there.
That's a good question. We've never been in there.
Okay. Is it okay if I check it out?
Yeah, go ahead. In the interest of getting it straightened up would be good for all of us.
Well, there might be something I could do to the roof in the meantime, too, to prevent any further damage.
If you can come up with a plan, sure the council would, would put you on the agenda so we could take some sort of action.
Okay.
We'll make sure we do it under Dave's guidelines, so we don't do anything wrong.
Yeah, if you find any personal property that has any sentimental value, you can feel free to remove that for your sisters and your sister-in-law, or if your family has it.
It's, it's a hoarder's mess. There are two refrigerators with food in it.
Oh.
Oh.
Strap the door shut.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Big dumpster.
It won't be easy.
They're gonna have to strap really tight.
Take it far away. Thanks, Jim. Anybody else for public forum?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we start, I got a check in the mail today for $500 from a fellow named William Nolan. I met him like five months ago, and I have no idea how I did, but he expressed how good the community looked, and he says, he hadn't moved here. He went, bought an acreage in early. They decided to go to Carol. He's 96 years old. He goes back and forth to California. He wanted to do something with our local veterans, like take them to eat or something. Not sure that was going to work, so I said that he could pay $500. I would buy flags for the memorial, because the city buys them every year, about 500 bucks. I have a check here for the veterans' memorials for new flags for Memorial Day if we can get them. Thank you, William. He's in California again. Nice fellow.
Is anyone that used to own the cabin on East End late years ago? Where Jim had lost long live?
Oh, here, you can have a check. Nice fellow. He only eats Mexican restaurants. That's all I can tell you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, the additions.
Yeah, I know that there, that on Saturday, I sent out some additions to the consent agenda not included in the original, in the original agenda. That is, to approve liquor license for the community club for sipping sample, approve closure of Main Street and Fourth Street for sipping sample on the third, and approve closure of Third Street for Stone Pure Summer Concert Series for the four summer dates this year. Other than that, everything is the same.
Motion to approve.
Roll call.
Molder.
Yes.
Molder.
Yep.
Beckman.
Yep.
Frank.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, we have three guilty permits. The trustees are all measured correctly.
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Yes.
Molder.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Molder.
Yes.
Okay, this is kind of an occasion. This is Scott's last meeting, so this will be his last administrator report.
So we got it.
So we got it. We wish you with the best of luck, and many of us will miss you.
Well, thanks. I do appreciate it. Hey, a couple things for you. And one item that's listed there is process for Iron Utility Superintendent. First of all, we said that we'd have first review of applications, then after the 20 seconds. So it'll be one more week of application time. I gave you the copies of the applications that we have received so far. So my question for the council is then, what process would you like to, like to work through as far as working through the selections? Would you like to use a committee structure? Would you, would you like to have the entire council involved in this? Would you like to start with the committee and end with the council?
Any input from the council? What would they like?
I think it should be a council review.
Committee recommendation.
With the committee recommendation?
Well, yes, I guess it's just a.
Start with the committee.
I would certainly see that, of course, the, the interview of, of the candidates needs to happen before the, before the entire council. It's a department head position. You want to be able to select that. And it can just be, you know, that we get you all the applications and you can, we can whittle them down through either, either a meeting or through, just through an email exchange. And two, if people have some, some suggestions. And see how many, how many folks you'd like to interview. One thing about this, though, and we'll work through our, our agreement with John Gibson, then at the end here, that I, I think I'd really suggest John would, would work with the council as you work through this process. He'd be around to get them back on, on the, on the feet and get going.
If he gives input, it'd be really good.
Would be valuable. Okay, the entire council, do an interview?
I, that just means my opinion. I don't know where we're at.
And all of us review them? You know? And do your input? Does it have to be in a committee altogether? Can we?
Can't we do it like we did with the other day?
Yeah, I mean, you can do it, you can do it to a time, and that would be fine, too. Let's, we'll do that. We'll work through some food and salad. Yeah, so sometime after, after next Monday, we'll, we'll get some, get all of the council together two by two, and, and you guys can figure out who it is that you would like to invite for interview. I think my only other thing is, is Yetter Locker. And there is a letter at your, at your desk tonight from Beestreem Kim. And that is, that's a sewer analysis then from, from Yetter. So what we had asked of Yetter is to take sewer samples basically at the same time of the day for five straight days. We want to see what a, what a week of activity looks like there. So they did that, and they took those five samples at 1:00 every day. And it has some interesting information there about how things change from day to day. Okay, so just as you're looking at, know that, know that they slaughter on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. So that would, the, the higher, more concentrated waste levels are on those days. Okay, so, and you can certainly take your time and read through that correspondence from, from Bob Beestre. But, you know, the short answer there is that, you know, if it's, if it's the type of operation that Jason runs over in, in Yetter right now, there's really no, no concern about the wastewater side of things. And if it's a, a small expansion from that, still really no concern. When you get to be really a substantial increase from where it's at right now, two, three, four times larger, then you would want to be cognizant of what's going on out there and how much of your, of the city's wastewater treatment capacity is being devoted into one customer. So still very, very positive in that regard. Today, I received an, an application from Larry Howser about rezoning some property. Okay, so this, this land would be basically the same depth as Stuart Boom's acreage, and then is directly to the west of Stuart. So about, about that acreage there is as deep and about 250 feet wide, was the proposal for what will become a request for rezoning. Front part of that is zoned as commercial and back part is residential. But this type of use would be an industrial use, so we would pursue a rezoning then to industrial.
All good news.
You bet. Yeah, everything, I mean, everything really is falling in line there. We can continue along.
And this is with Larry Moore then on that drainage stuff?
Yeah, that, so Larry does still intend that they can do a lot of dirt moving there to take off that knob and would take that dirt over, build up, build up a building site then for the, for the locker. Okay, talked a little bit about the notion of, you know, if you're doing that, and we were looking at a, at a cross-ground drainage swale type of a drainage system, would this be something that we could somehow work together to, to accomplish a couple of those things? Okay? It was a little, little cold to start with, and started talking more about that and was willing to talk with his, his excavation folks who are there on site and get some idea of really what's involved. So it, it's open for discussion.
Because wouldn't that be in our best interest to partner with him? At his best interest?
Your good to him.
Yeah. Everybody's.
Right.
Before we go to the Rag Right, some of us met with Avapco today, and the largest employer for SAC County is here tonight. Brett, you have a few words for us?
Yeah, sure, again, sorry I'm late. Had an interview over at the docket tonight. Sorry making you guys turn around. I can go over there and make it easier. I don't want you to have to. Yeah, so we had a really good day today, honestly, folks, and it's cool to see the check. This is a big investment for Avapco from a philanthropic mindset. Avapco's not always been too involved, I guess you would say. But honestly, I learned about this project when I was here meeting with you folks to get approval for Building B. And here we are, three years later, and Building B's alive and kicking. And we have Building C going up as we speak. We're open by the 4th of July to have that building up. And the quite honest truth is, is that we're probably low on, on space as it is. We probably need more. Is that me causing that? Too loud?
No, it's usually one of these batteries are bad.
Oh, okay. All right. Anyway, so it was great to have you guys out there today, and I'm excited about this. And our employee base was as well. We had lots of compliments, and, and they're excited about that. I think this community center is going to be really good for us moving forward. I mean, we meet three times, excuse me, four times a year on the 15th of March and June and September and December. And as you guys saw that we're out there today, I had to move a bunch of stuff to be able to get everybody assembled in that area. Not to mention, our plant managers' meetings are held at some place every year, and we're looking for that picnic. So anyway, that's kind of a little bit basis on, on the community center funding, but we're excited to jump on board for that. Other news at Avapco, it's, it's very busy. We have enough work right now lined up to get us through. We have the remaining part of 2023 already scheduled. And so, I mean, we're not talking a couple dollars and cents. It's a $125 million a year plan, folks, here in Lakeview. So we have 2023 booked. We have seen a little bit of, a little recession, a little bit from orders and order inputs. But that came back last week, and so I'd say that before we know it, we're going to have first quarter of 2024 booked as well. So things are, things are going well. Reality is, we still are going to need a lot more people to do it. We're sitting right at 289 as we, as we stand here today. And we were almost at 300 a month ago, but yeah, so it's 300 people that we're, we're employing out there right now. But other than that, you know, we're interviewing tonight. We're interviewing for a people manager. We hired a parts manager there a couple weeks ago. It's going to be starting. So, you know, you get that many people, and now you got to start adding those pieces to be able to keep them going in the right directions. Got a young man starting from Lakeview tomorrow, so that's kind of exciting. You guys brought that up the last time I saw you. But all good stuff at Avapco.
Yeah, we want to thank you for being a great partner with Lakeview.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
You bet.
Could I make a comment?
Yes, you go ahead.
We have been meeting with, as a part of the Housing Committee, Development Committee, we've been meeting with you for three or four years, and I don't want you to think that we have forgotten you or, you know, the need for income housing. Lower, not lower.
Workforce.
Workforce housing in Lakeview. We are still working on it very hard.
Right.
Hopefully, we can do that, and it may be if we have this workforce housing, more people will be moving here and we'll be able to be employed, and that will help with your employment, too.
That is a difficult thing. When I go into interviews, especially at manager level, that's a, that's a tough one to get people to live somewhere. Now, I will say this, my friends up in SAC City, like Steve Spots and, and just to name one, I guess, you know, they're doing that expansion in SAC City. And I initially was pretty like, well, I was against it in the mindset of, hey, we're not actually looking to put people in brand-new homes. But he actually shared something with me, and I just hadn't thought about it, is by new homes coming in, that maybe gives current homeowners for 20, 30 years an opportunity to, to move up, and then another house becomes available, and that articulation of home and housing happens. So, you know, if we can get into that type of affair, that more housing is available, that'll obviously be a benefit to us.
Well, we're still working on it. We just met again this week, so.
I still think an apartment would go well. So we've even talked about putting up living quarters. I mean, not probably very seriously, so don't write that down.
We, we, we went to SpaceX.
Somebody's battery's broken.
We went to SpaceX, and you ought to see some of the little tiny homes they've got there for those workers.
Sure.
It's just amazing.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, but any other questions, I guess?
Thank you very much.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Thanks for taking your time.
Glad to be here.
Okay, how about Rag Right?
Just a couple things. We had the head of Rag Right stopped by today. They are scheduling a pre-ride June 5th to, they're about, around, somewhere around 50 riders to ride from the start to the finish that week, just to ride the ride. Volunteers are still needed, so if you'd like to help volunteer for Rag Right, make sure you call Hannah or myself. And then I'll be also need your shirt size if you're wanting to help. Looking for sponsors for some banners that we're going to be putting up on the biaddock or up here on the Main Street here. Vendors, if anybody out there is thinking about being a vendor, you need to get those applications in ASAP. So that's where we're at.
They wrote here for SAC County League, to Rag Right, you can give a speech. Motion to approve.
Somewhere around 30,000 riders.
Thanks, Dave. Okay, we're going to open the public hearing on proposed amendments to the 2223 budget. Any public input?
Just the, the comments on, on this budget amendment, really, it's. So it starts on page five as far as what the explanations are. Some, some expenses in police, but then in fire, that is a couple of things about the bus repairs and the, and the siding. Okay, Minigolf, getting that budgeted into, into the parks was a large part there. Okay, and then that water plant media project, extra $100,000 had not been budgeted, so that was budgeted there, as well as the new dock into Town Bay. Okay, a couple of things that were taken out, which, which were not done, so the outlot, 20 housing incentives. Okay, and then the big one that was postponed until this fall or into the next budget is, is capital for streets on the Lake Shore Drive project. Okay, there was a little project at the library to replace that front door, put in a an auto-opening handicap front door. Okay, water ends up a little bit with expenses a little bit higher, and that has to do largely with chemicals and salt usage was a little higher. We expect to see that go down then after, after this new media project is done. And shot rough that, just an update on that, we had received a call from them last week looking at 30 days out. So that was, that was coming. Then some larger projects, then in, in electric about the system maintenance there for the switchgear that we put out on, on the system. Add a DGR cost of service study. And then inventory costs are a little bit higher. Again, that just has to do with increased cost and supply chains and being able to buy things when you can. In total, you know, the amendment ends up being a little bit of a negative amendment. But what has to happen when you're doing these amendments is that you get the money into the proper place so that the functional categories for, for state budgeting purposes are not overspent. So that's really that's what occurs here.
We'll close the public hearing on the proposed budget amendments. Resolution 2323 is approving that.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
On second?
Roll call.
What?
I don't know who got it.
We'll have Mike in there.
Mike up.
Okay, Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Molder.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes.
Molder.
We have, we have some questions.
Okay.
About the budget. Can we ask them?
Sure, go ahead.
Well, you said something about the library door.
Yeah.
I thought it was paid totally out of our TNA.
It is. It just needs to show that expense to be able to. You need to have the expense approved through the budget, so it didn't look like we overspent that part of the budget.
Okay, so even though that's not city money.
True.
Still is in the city budget.
Through the city book, so it can be.
All right, I just had a question about that.
Yep.
I have a question about the housing. Remember that 50,000 that was in the housing budget?
I said we, we had talked about that, and.
Is it still there?
I mean, that's.
Took it out?
The, I don't know that it was, was ever there. It was, it was set aside for special project.
It was earmarked, if that's what you want to put it. It's not longer. Is that what you're saying?
It, it's not in the budget. That's true. But, I mean, never was. I mean, it was earmarked, and we had some discussions on it for, for special project.
Well, it used to show up. So I don't know what you mean by not being in the budget. It used to be in the stuff you gave the council as a line item. No, it didn't.
Okay. I want to check that, Vicki.
Is there anything for dust control in the budget?
Yes, and I know that, that issue came up today. And I'll just, I guess, tell the council about where we're at with dust control. That we have historically always put dust control down there. And we've used ProCoop for years, and, and they had mixed reviews about that. We tried a couple of different kinds than last year and got to the third one that we tried that everybody seemed pretty happy with, and it worked pretty well. tried that everybody seemed pretty happy with and it worked pretty well. And we got notice from that company that they're not coming to Sac County this year. They're more from Central Island. So we very likely would be back to ProCoOp to try that one still.
Can you reach out to Jim or Craig and Jackie Walsh and see who they use?
That's the one who's not coming back to Sac County.
But I think Craig was researching for another supplier.
Because they got theirs done, Craig and Jackie got theirs done out there.
Has been done already?
And there's been one south of town out here by Walt Grody's that was done and it, I drive across there every day with the bus and it seems to work pretty good too. I don't know who the county, do them people personally hire them or does it go through the county?
The county goes through ProCo, or at least, you know, Pro has, maybe I'll recent that mic, that it's all personally done, they would just, if the county ever gave any incentives, which they don't do anymore, they would work with the vendor, so I will check with Craig and Jackie.
Okay, resolution 2324. Chief of Police, would you like to tell us what we have? Chris?
Yeah, so everybody knows Cody took a job somewhere else and we thank him for everything he's done, he did a really good job for us. The last time we went through our hiring process, we had two guys, obviously, that we hired and we sent in the academy, and Romeo Chavez was the other one, which I kind of kept him in my back pocket there, you know, for a time like this. And it just kind of worked out perfectly. He's come from us, he worked at BB County for six years.
About six years.
About six years. He was our K-9 handler out there, he's got his bachelor's, he's done a lot of good things. Yeah, we're looking to hire him and get him out on the road because we're obviously down too right now, so.
You highly recommend him.
I highly recommend him, yeah.
That's what we need.
I'll make a motion to hire.
And I'll second.
Romeo Chavez?
Yes.
There you go.
You call me Alex.
No, Alex.
I go by Alex, you call me Alex.
So with that then, I do want to review that resolutions as we hire and the pay is 2603. When we restructured the pay system for the police, it is then a percentage of what the chief is then based upon years. And then, so when you get to be a certified officer with two years experience, so that gets you to high pay. So this is high, this is high pay. And then when it'll roll around then for the first of July for a union change, again, there'd be a little bump up there then also. Is also proposed that we would grant Alex his personal leave for the remainder of this year, what amount to is that we would grant three days worth of personal leave.
Seems fair. We have a motion to the second for 2324, roll call.
Okay, Beckman?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Wolden?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Welcome, Alex.
Thank you. Looking forward to seeing you. On Wednesday. Wednesday, yep, Wednesday. We're not wasting time. I'll be off and on the road quick, so. That's cool, nice to meet you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, resolution 2325 is approving the community cat grant agreement.
So we had, we were awarded this cat grant, it's $240,000 cat grant, comes to the city council for action tonight, just as a requirement of the contract that says that the contract would be approved by resolution of the city council. Just a little update then on fundraising, that fundraising does continue, so with this cat grant, there was still a gap there that was about $200,000 when we started to work on it. And then they have continued to make contacts and work on that. And then a mailer was sent out again here this past week with working towards bringing in those additional funds then, and then Great Places said that they would work with us on some additional fundings also, not knowing exactly what that would be. But that's the stat, so if it's $1.6 million project, the gap was $200,000 still.
Can I add? I've written two grants and I have three more in the pipelines.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second? Roll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Wolden?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, we have a agreement to purchase power, affirm the power.
Now, what we want to talk through is, starts on page 26. And just a reminder again about how we purchase our power, that we have a substantial allocation of our power that comes from WAPA, a little something over 70% of our power comes from WAPA. And the remainder of that then, we purchase from MEAN, the Municipal Energy Agency of Nebraska. And then we have purchased power from them for several years, I think we have a five-year contract that had another three-year extension. So that three-year extension expires in May of '24. Then, so we do need to be looking at what the city would be arranging for longer-term power. So MEAN has offered us some different proposals and that's shown a little bit on page 26. They've offered us these three contract options. Okay, so the top bullet there, skirt service schedule J, that is what we are right now. That is, that's fixed rate, that is a fixed rate contract where the amount per megawatt hour is going to be established per year, does go up year over year, but it's been, it's been a good way for us to buy power. It's just a fixed rate, you know exactly what it's going to be, even if it escalates a little bit from year to year, it's been a solid way for us to purchase power. Now, most of MEAN's customers are not Schedule J. And actually, most of their customers are the bottom one, they're Schedule M, which is a full member in MEAN. And it's a commitment that you would purchase power from MEAN that jives with your WAPA contract too. So our WAPA contract expires, I think, in 2054, 2050 something.
54.
And so that's a long term. So they gave us Schedule M, the pricing on Schedule M will not be attractive, you know, I'll tell you that already. So they've then also given us an option there about Schedule K. Well, the price of Schedule K is Schedule M plus 5%, but it's a 10-year contract then as opposed to having a fixed rate under J for five years. Flip to the next page, here's the pricing. And you'll see some of my chicken scratches on here as we were sitting through meetings with them, they were explaining this. In the upper left-hand corner there it says current 5226, that's what our current rate is as of right now, 5226. And that would go up then for the first six months of the proposed contract, well, $62. And then it does go up annually thereafter, but again, this is proposed to be five years. They gave us that option as incremental, they also gave us an option as flat rate. You could have a five-year flat rate on that at $64.90. The dollars work out just the same. So there is no financial incentive to choose one over the other. But it has worked well for us to know that your price is going to escalate over the years, but you can plan for that. Now, in the right-hand side, you can see what service schedule K rate is, and this would be that 10-year rate at 7515. Flip back into that council memo and I'll talk through a couple of these numbers there. Because based upon 5226 in 2021, the gross amount that we paid to MEAN was $520,000 for that rate from June to December of '24 then, the proposed rate would go up to $62. And it increases six months later, it increases annually thereafter, but based upon the 2021 usage at that $62, okay, we, the amount that we paid to MEAN would increase to $617,000. Still a $97,000 increase this year for what we would pay for power, but yet I would also tell you, I think it's a pretty solid deal, you know, about as good as what we would see. So.
How long the contract is talking about?
This proposal will be for five years, okay? Just on page 28, that just breaks it down a little bit about how we buy power, you see that it's 72% WAPA, 28% from MEAN. Page 29 shows composite rates, composite rates include transmission and those transmission fees that are then coming from WAPA. So you see what the WAPA rate is compared to what the MEAN rate is. And, you know, of course, that's why we're so very fortunate to have that huge WAPA allocation, helps us out a lot, keeps the total composite rate lower. And then on page 30 and 31 was just some examples of what was happening with electricity pricing. And, you know, they were really talking through the notion that over the past several years, you'd see power costs continue to rise and they would anticipate that that continues to some extent into the future. So as we look at these options for power supply, I had submitted these proposals then to Marlon Verbus, who is our electrical consultant, and had Marlon give us his first flush about any of these proposals we received from MEAN. And it's just a, you know, pretty easy decision, you look at Schedule J and it'd be that incremental rate, okay? The main question would be, are you ready to get into another five-year contract with MEAN or would you like to go to the market and take an RFP out to the market? That was my main question for Marlon. And of course, you're just second guessing whatever the market's going to do, but his answer basically was, you should stay with MEAN.
We've used him for years.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Been a long time.
Yeah, so I'm interested in your thoughts on that. Again, the main question being whether you would, whether you would want to go to the market to see what's out there on the market or not.
Doesn't cost us anything?
Oh, you'd hire a consultant to do it. And it's a Lakeview undertaking, it's.
Well, I know what the talk is in the country, electric credits are going to skyrocket.
Yep.
I think there's a lot to be said for fixed rate contract, you know, that ties us in and you know what you're going to do. I am okay with that.
They haven't got a rate adjustment from DGR yet either, what they think our rate should be.
No, but that's the other part about this, is timing-wise, to include in that cost of service study, you would make a decision that you'd like to stick with MEAN through the Schedule J contract that we would have, have DGR incorporate those prices then into our cost of service study, knowing that those are set then for the next several years.
So we're looking for a decision tonight?
No, you know, if we can get some guidance about which way you would like to go tonight, it would tell you that the agreement is in your packet, that starts on page 32. There's also an ordinance that MEAN would require that we pass, we don't have that ordinance yet. So we could not take action to enter into anything officially tonight. If we would get guidance that that's the way that you would like to go, we would make that happen and be ready to go with the next council meeting.
So what would the council like to do?
Well, my opinion is that we know what we have for at least five years. And I'll bet a dollar to you that it'll go up no matter what we have for our next one, but you don't want to tie yourself into a real long term either, so, because there might be some other, something else that would pop up that would be a little more competitive, but at least we'd be controlling our destiny for five years and we can work on what it's going to cost the average homeowner, so that might have two sets worth.
We'd like to have a consensus.
If folks are on board with this, then we could have a motion to instruct the staff to proceed with Schedule J.
I'll make that motion, sorry.
May I second?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Wolden?
Yes.
Beckman?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Okay, we need to do a WAPA agreement or credits, I guess. We only do credits.
This is something, this is something brand new and it's something that at some point in the future, this may be something that is beneficial to WAPA customers. So it just works like this and as soon as we explain this, we'll get to the point where I'm going to ask you not to make a decision on this tonight either, because I gave you the contracts, those are just at your seat tonight, they're lengthy and we would want to have a chance to review those. So the concept here is that the utility members of WAPA will be able to earn some renewable energy credits for the proportionate amount of WAPA power that they purchase from WAPA, okay? So currently, these credits, you would obtain your credits, they're not tradable and they can't be sold, you know, anything like that, but you've got to account for them, you've got to keep accounting, and we would absolutely want to make sure that we keep accounting for these things. Now, they may, they may not be valuable today, but you don't know what the future's going to bring. And the concept of having some renewable energy credits that you own, that could potentially at some point be of some use to you or some value or some trading value, you would certainly want to do. The issue for the city is how do we account for those RDCs then? So we, as a member of MEAN, MEAN will account for our RDCs for us. And we would want to do this, you could conceivably set up something on your own, but that's just way above what we would do for our small utility. So we would have MEAN look after our RDCs. That's what these, there's two agreements in this packet tonight. And we've got to have an agreement with WAPA about having MEAN manage our RDCs and then you've got to have an agreement with MEAN about having them do it. Currently, and the agreement reads this with MEAN, is that currently there's no cost to have them manage our RDCs and there would be no cost unless WAPA instituted a cost to be passed through. So something that the city is going to want to do and I would strongly advocate that we would use MEAN to manage our RDCs. I would just not recommend that we're going to do that.
Then we won't do that. Okay, ordinance 527, parking?
Yeah, you want to talk through that a little bit tonight?
Well, I've witnessed up there at the school, the one-way street heading west toward the school, mailboxes are on the north side, the no parking is on the south side. Nice to just remove the no parking on the north side to try and keep the mailboxes clear and there's more driveways on the north side. It just, I mean, it's a minor adjustment and be more effective, I think.
I'm looking at the ordinance about this, about establishing that no parking zone there permanently on the north side of the street. We, I did not find that, I don't know that we have ever established an ordinance on this. This would establish an ordinance to move the no parking zone to the south. Nope, excuse, move it to the north.
Move it to the north.
Has our chief looked at, have you looked at that at all?
Yeah, yeah, it's been, it's been a pain all year.
So you were trying to address it?
Yeah.
But we should do that at the school year-end, so doesn't confuse the.
Yeah, you're not going to be able to probably change it now, but thankfully we're real close to the end of the school year, so.
Because they're the last days of the.
There's cars that already park on the south side, I mean, when it says no parking, it's.
Yeah, it's crazy up there right now.
And I know this is a legitimate, but did you talk to him about that stop sign?
Well, I talked to him.
Yeah, we talked about that too and about that stop sign out there by Lincoln Cut Off.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't see a reason for. Yeah, yeah, I mean, I don't see a reason for a stop sign, I mean, we, we really haven't received any complaints out there, we hadn't had any accidents out there.
Uh, I correct that, there was an accident there, Theresa Grilling.
When?
I don't know the exact date, but, um, Mary Meyer.
Golf cart.
Golf cart. She cut the corner and, but there was a, I was sitting there and there was two pickups in Brandon Poon's driveway and a car came from the south heading north. And I had to inch my way out to see and had I not been going slow when I inched my way out, I more than likely would have been clipped because that car was moving right along. So that's why I suggested putting a stop sign heading north. It'd be a three-way stop.
I'll look at it again, I'll go back out there again.
It, it's probably changed a little bit since Brandon.
Well, yes, since Brandon's house is there and vehicle's in his driveway. Prior to Brandon's house being there, it was open space, so you could see.
Okay.
Yeah, I've almost been hit a couple times.
Oh, yeah?
And I've had to stop and then I freak out, the person coming from, there are people who are coming from the south.
Yeah.
Are, are going in a nice clip.
Yeah, and that's, that's what happened to me that day too.
I'll go out there and look at it again. I'll let you know.
There's another spot out there too, as you go down where they're, all that new construction right there by Lakewood Ballroom.
North of Lakewood?
Yeah, that's real bad because you have the entrance to, um, Roadies.
Harbor Drive.
Harbor Drive.
Yeah.
And then you have Lakew, um, Lakewood coming out there. And that's real bad right now, cause you can't see around the new house. I think it needs something at the top of the hill that says like hidden driveways or something.
You can take a look at that too, Chris?
Yeah.
Going back with something?
Yeah, cause that's all new, the old one's all.
It's all new.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion, we change this no parking from, uh, south to the north.
Ordinance five twenty-seven.
First reading of the ordinance?
Second.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Okay, definitely, yes, thank you.
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
Hold on.
Yes.
You wanna have a motion to waive this second, third reads? Would you wanna waive or?
I guess you, you might wanna, you might wanna wait and see if there's any, uh, feedback from the neighborhood. And like saying, wanna make that change before the.
Just go anywhere, yeah. Wouldn't wanna confuse the little ones.
It's not the little ones.
Yeah, it's the big ones too.
It's the big ones.
Okay, we're gonna talk about the street sweeper.
Yeah, so let's, uh, let's talk about that a little bit, about, about opportunities with the street, uh, sweeper. We have this proposal, starts on page fifty-three, a proposal, uh, from Mid Iowa Solid Waste. So Tom from Mid Iowa Solid Waste is here tonight, he may be able to, uh, to talk us through this proposal, uh, about that street sweeper. I guess, once, once you, Tom, can you just talk about the machine a little bit then, maybe a little Q and A about the, about the machine?
Yeah, this would be our, our demo that we brought up and showed you guys in the, the demo, cause we did multiple proposals. Basically, we've got our demo that's, I take it around, we're up from Nebraska, we just do what we did that day, spend about an hour, show it off and sweep, sweep a little bit, it's not gonna have a ton of hours on it. We run it till fall and then it'll be ready for delivery. Um, the other option was to order a brand new one. When it came in, which is at two hundred and ten, two hundred and forty days, you could wait till that one or the source of the one, but, uh, yeah, the demo one, it's, it's available in the fall, um, pretty much has all the options on it, you guys were looking for. It's two thousand twenty-three Freightliner Cummins Allison, um, it's got the tube in the back for doing intakes, things like that, you know, you suck the leaves out of intakes and all that, stainless steel body, pretty well loaded up. I mean, our demos are pretty, pretty well loaded too, so. So like I said, once, either we get our new demo in or we're done with it in the fall, that's when we'll be ready for delivery, so it'll be sometime in November more likely.
How, how many hours do you have on the motor that does the actual work for sucking up this stuff, but is that?
Dozens of hours?
Yeah.
Right now, not very many, but we'll have, to estimate, I probably, I don't know, I mean, it won't be that many hours on it. Like I said, it's really just a demo model, so.
And you spend about, what you just said, you spend about an hour?
Hour here, you know, and I'll run it around quite a bit, Nebraska, we'll run it around and then Eastern Iowa, so we'll, we'll have some hours on it. The nice part about that, everything's set, it's been broken, it's been gone through. When we take that out, Brian Davis, our rep is with us a lot of times, so we do a lot of modifications, adjusting things, you know, that we could do with a new one too, but like Dean always said, we kinda get some bugs out of them and we get it and it's ready to roll. That was kinda his goal in that, um, does save a little money too. So we took off for that, as you can see in the price difference on the, uh, the demo one versus the new one. That's, that's the money savings.
I have a question that you may not like it, but who else, who else makes other street sweepers, just how many companies are out there?
A number of them, a lot of them, I mean, there's, there's Elgin, there's Johnson, like you have. Them are the three, us three are kinda the main ones that I butt heads against, um, so that's kinda the ones we run around. But there's also different kinds, you've got mechanical sweepers, vacuum sweepers and regenerative air, which we are regenerative air, which is good for picking up sand, fines, heavy debris, things like that. We're not your, your big large sticks and hubcaps and things like that.
Yeah, they don't pick up sticks.
Nope, so, but we do different than a mechanical, mechanical can do the big stuff, but it leaves a lot of fines and debris that gets in your, your storm sewers. And that's, that's what you're after, is trying to clean up the storm, or the streets before it hits the storm sewers and ends up in the lake eventually, but, uh.
What, what makes yours better than the competitors?
Well, I mean, Timco's been around, they are a home, a family that ran business, um, still third generation now is running the business. Their sweeper has not changed a lot in the years they've been manufacturing, uh, all manufactured out of Waco, Texas, so parts availability or if we don't have it in Johnston, Iowa, it's in Timco, we'll pull it off the sim line, get it here today. Nothing coming overseas, things like that, all US made. Stainless steel body on ours all the way through. Just the way our pickup head's designed, we do awesome on leaves, I'm sure you guys have leaf problem in the fall too, so. We can remove the front curtain on ours, we've got a curtain lifter that's operated in the cab, but we can also pull the curtains off, um, and then it's one giant vacuum, eighty-seven inches, you can just go pick up leaves, so. That's kinda where our shines is really, is, is leaves and, and the small fines, keeping that from the storms.
On that tube on the back?
Mm-hmm.
For cleaning out the, the storm sewer grates and stuff? If hypothetical situation arose where we need to use that for like our, uh, our back tank, you know, cause it's got a power, like, like I seen, right, it's got a power worship wand, could we use that on dirt stuff too?
You can't, um, you're only gonna go a few feet deep, you're not going to go, you're not gonna hydroexcavate a huge hole fifteen feet deep.
Right.
Um, but you would be able, I mean, I know people doing it, using it for like their pit waste in their shops, um, they'll suck them out with or they'll do a small hydroexcavation hole or something like that, but, you know, you might dig a signpost or something like that, but you're not gonna wanna big, like a blower would on a vacuum truck.
And if we ordered a new one, I'd see the price of the new one compared to the demo.
I think he provided a deal, I just provided a demo one.
Yeah, the new one, I got three forty-eight, three twelve, would be a new one. And that's two hundred and, well, two hundred and forty to three hundred days delivery on that one. So that'd be in the spring.
We'd like the twenty twenty-one price.
Everybody would.
I just thought I'd let you know.
Yeah, no, I, trust me, trust me, I've.
You wouldn't miss that.
I, I don't get paid till things are delivered and, uh, paid for, so yeah, I've waited for a year and a half, eighteen months on trucks, hasn't been, hasn't been fun, so.
This is a, you said what chassis is on here, I was gone the day.
This one actually has an international chassis with a Cummins and Allison.
Okay, Allison six P?
Yeah. Yeah, three thousand, I think it is on, so. Yeah, and it's got the, you know, I mean, the Cummins and Allison's kinda what everybody's going to now, um, they've all got away from the Max Force on that, so. Well, our owner knows why, he spent thirty-five thousand on one we had, so, on one of our rentals, so. And you have to put another Max Force back in, so you replace a problem with a ticking time bomb.
No chance if we would decide to go with this demo unit to get it any sooner?
I'm working on it, trying to get another one ordered, I mean, that's our goal, is to get one ordered and get one sooner than that. With the market, I don't wanna mislead you and say yes, cause I don't know.
If we do decide on this one tonight, uh, we do everything we can to get it, get it here.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're gonna wear a new one regardless and then, yeah, we'll limit some hours to, you know, we'll, we'll not send it out on rents or things like that, it'll just be demo model, so. And most of the demo, a lot of that stuff's me driving around, I mean, I almost brought it tonight, I didn't have it, I'd have brought it and then I'd have worked this area tomorrow, you know, with it, so a lot of it's just driving hours on, or miles, which, once you get it, you guys won't put much per miles on it then.
Did I hear you say you won't send it out for rents?
We wouldn't send it out for rent then, sometimes we'll send ours out for rent sometimes, but we would, like, if you guys purchased it tonight, that was.
Do you have stuff available for rents?
Mm-hmm.
The, the similar models?
Mm-hmm, older.
Right.
Typically older, we got a two thousand ten Max Force and then we got a two thousand two older one we'll send out on rent. We've got a four thirty-five coming in that'll be a rental and then we'll do like Newton Speedway.
Yep.
We're a sponsor for them, so the Timco preferred sweeper out there, so we sponsor that, so we'll send it to the track too.
What does a rent cost?
Eight thousand a month. And then two in front of our shop, so you gotta get it up there, you know, send a driver or whatever it may be, but.
Is there, sorry, I missed.
Go for it.
Is there a possibility that if we rent one from you for three months? Or four months, whatever it be, that some of that rent fee could come off the purchase of the demo since we can't get the demo?
Possible. We talked to the owner, we've done that in the past, we do that on, we do that on, um, like sewer cleaners, we'll put that and then it'll be, it's typically it's like fifty percent we'll put back, if we back into the ownership of it.
We're, we're need a sweeper soon.
Like rent one of the older ones and then on the new one, so you have one here, I've seen Ragbrass, I've seen some of that on the jet, I'm thinking, man, it'd be nice to have a sweeper.
And did you look at the existing one we had?
Oh, yeah.
And was it worth anything to you?
No, cause one of, one like that, you get it, we get a trailer and things and it's, you guys would get more money putting it on Gov. deals than what I'm gonna be able to offer, just, we're not gonna deal with, if it was a Timco, yes, but since it's not our brand, parts for them are extremely difficult to get, some of them come overseas, so I would recommend going to Gov. deals, you're gonna get, you're gonna get a lot of money.
Big arm.
Big arm of work, any of them.
We've had good luck with them.
Purpleway, yeah, any of them sites is gonna be, I, I don't wanna insult you with, cause I got a dollar yet and it's, it's a huge expense to me upfront.
I would like to see what kinda deal you could give us for if we rent one till the demo was ready.
Rental, yeah.
Whether it's the two thousand, what do you say, a two thousand two or?
Yeah, there's an older one, there's that, two thousand, the two thousand ten come from, uh, City of Milford, I took you down train, the only downfall of his is Max Force, which they had no problems with they say.
Whatever.
And we have.
That's why they have the lawsuits.
But we're only talking a couple months here, whenever you get this.
Well, if it's rented, the, if something goes wrong with the Max Force, or you guys would.
We gotta take care of it, that's what happened with the last one, so. But no, it's for sale, so it's, we do that.
I mean, it gives us an opportunity to see what we'd have for.
There's a possible to, we might have a four thirty-five coming in, which is, pretty much everything's the same, it's a four-yard hopper versus a six-yard hopper.
Okay.
So you might have to go dump more, but it's still, it does a great job sweeping, it's on a Zuzu chassis, a little smaller to get around, but that might be for rent too.
And a Zuzu chassis then?
Mm-hmm.
That stub knows the Suzus.
Yep, we put them like, that's what Brita has.
Do you get that from Housby?
Timco, when they order all the chassis, they order a pool of them, so we don't really, we don't get them from anybody, they already come on the two Timco direct. So, yeah, Brita's got the four thirty-five, Dunlap's got the four thirty-five, so they're good little sweepers, I mean, they work just as well, they're just.
Yeah, see what you can work out for.
Smaller hopper.
Rent.
Yep. So what are you, what are you thinking, see, so, so you wanna see what kinda deal I could put together on rent for the summer or three months?
I would say until the demo is available, if we decide to purchase a demo, until the demo's available.
Right.
Unless it's winter time and then we don't need it in winter time, you know what I mean?
Yeah, just so it, uh, then we're faced, looking at three weeks to our next meeting.
Right.
So.
I mean, in, in theory, let's go forward and let's see what you come up with.
Yeah, I get it, something right away, I mean.
I like seventy-five percent rebate better than fifty.
All I can do is ask you.
Look at that spending, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, um, can we save the nineteen hundred in shipping if we go to avoid and get it?
Oh, yeah, no, we, we, all we require is insurance certificate, isn't the big deal, yes.
Cause I see shipping's nineteen thirty-nine.
Um, that is, yeah, you could, yeah. Um, the shipping on the new one though, is that's already embedded in, I had to get it up here from Timco, so I have added the cost, but like your rent and stuff, could you come get it and, yeah, we'd figure that out, but, uh.
I think you can put some of that proposals together because I'd, I'd, I'd agree.
Mm-hmm, some rent, some.
We wanna make sure you use a sharp pencil.
And this is contingent on. Obviously.
Well, absolutely, yeah.
But that won't do it.
What did he say the noise?
Price was?
Three forty-eight.
About ten?
Four.
About three ten, wasn't it?
He told us that.
Yeah.
Three forty-eight, three twelve and I'm gonna tell you that the prices aren't gonna come down next year. I've already, we've already been instructed that, that they're gonna go up another.
And, and one other question, so I got first, sorry. Due to material shortages, long material lead times and unpredicted material cost, this three thirty-three, four seventy-five is as high as it's gonna be because John wants you to sharpen your pencil.
We, this is a boilerplate on all our proposals, so we've, we've had to put that on there due to.
I get it.
So when everything hit, kinda hit us and hit our manufacturers, so we were actually forced to go back and get, that's all been corrected, not on Timco, Timco's good, but on other products.
No, we're not expecting a surcharge or anything like that.
Nope, no, that's, when this all happened and, it was about a year ago, that, that's just a standard boilerplate on all our folks now, so. But now I can put a rent together, that's not a problem at all.
We look forward to seeing that.
Just, uh, a little up, update then for the council on, uh, financing options then. They've given some financing options, like fifty-six, eight fifty-six. Well, yes, I might have stayed. Eight fifty-six showed a lease, a lease, uh, one of their lease proposals. So, um, just working through local banks as far as what a, what a percent interest rate would be there, uh, just working through local, would be, I said, I, give me a proposal for two hundred and fifty thousand for, uh, for five years and it was, it'll be three and a half to four percent.
That's pretty good compared to the lease then. The nice part about the lease, and we work with this company just because, or this bank because they know our equipment, um, the nice part about the lease is that once you lock the interest rate in, you get a year deferment. So if you ride this out and say the interest comes down in November, you get the sweeper, lock your interest rate, you got a whole nother year to start payment. So that makes a municipal lease pretty attractive, but, and then there's no penalty for paying it off early. So that's where something, if you had to get your budget aligned, things like that, we, we do that quite a bit with municipalities, just to get them into equipment, if something broke or, or they needed it right away or just money shortfall because equipment's jumped up thirty percent, um, a lot of people are doing that lease, but the interest wasn't as, and it's, I think it's went down since I gave you that even, I talked to him the other day on a piece of equipment, but I don't think it was as good as your bank attractive as that, but, and I don't know if they do that either, but. Um, so this purchase, like, like this rental, after I get you all this, would that have to go back through council again or is that something, you could make a decision, we could get a, get something going for the rent or has it gotta go back through another meeting?
I think it should come back to the council.
Okay.
We'll gotta see how sharp the pencil is.
I can, I can work on it, I just, I wanted to know my timeline too, so.
Yep.
And the next council meeting is?
June fifth.
Unless we would have a special meeting just to talk about the street.
Okay.
Which?
But we saw the difference in yours and ours for street sweeper.
Which could happen if you had a good sharp pencil for us.
Yeah, it's a lot that we can't refuse, you know?
Like seventy-five percent back in a three hundred dollars, three hundred thousand purchase price, pretty, pretty good.
We won't have a second, we'll, we'll.
We'll see.
We won't need a second.
We'll need it all.
Um, I used to sell trucks, so I know that there's room.
There probably is, some, it's not as, good as it used to be, but, yeah, there's probably some.
Do you have a card you can leave?
I do, yeah.
Cause this demo, this picture to this demo doesn't have that suction tube and stuff on it, correct?
The demo?
Put this, this out of these pictures?
That one, let me confirm, you know, if.
Cause I don't see it.
No, that, that's the, that's the usual that's that gave.
Did my else do this?
Yeah.
Oh, come on, see all that, that's what's being trucked. You're a cheerleader, right?
There you go. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we got our, talking about our pickup for record department, Jeff, you got any information that we should?
I had to stop, talk to Dale, I talked to the salesman, and the difference between the four fifty and the three fifty, we talked a couple hundred dollars. Problem is, if we go to bid the three fifty, that throws us into the twenty fours, and that changes all the pricing and everything.
What's your recommendation?
Looking at weight, and I guess if you go to the twenty-four, go to a three fifty, basically.
Go ahead.
Basically, I mean, basically, you're talking, uh, it's, it, the difference between the two is a little payload in the springs, is what the difference is.
And you need that extra payload, don't you?
Well, I was talking with Dale, we talked about putting the brine tank on, if we continue to use that, too, in the winter also, so you can have that weight sitting on it all.
Jeff and I talked quite a bit that day, you know, the price difference between the three fifty, four fifties, minor, from that, my thing is, we're in the middle of hiring a new superintendent, and what if this isn't the type of pickup he wants? And when I say that, and I, I talked to Jeff, the flatbed, maybe he wants the utility body back on, maybe he's gonna run things different than what they want, you know? I definitely agree we need to upgrade the pickup, the other one you said is two thousand six, right?
Yep.
You know, that's my only input, we're in the middle of hiring a new.
Everybody.
Yeah, but, see where I've come from, and, you know, it, it's gonna be on order anyway, unless we go to a lot and find one. And I don't know if you can find one on a, on a, on a government purchase program or not, Mackey's had like nine of them over there.
Oh, really?
But I don't know if they're sold.
Yeah.
You know, that, that was my only, and I told Jeff that, that I would probably bring that up tonight, but that's, it's up to you guys.
And Chevrolet's waiting to find out at the end of the month whether or not they can get into the government program, they have, have not currently been in it for several years, so when they go to bid against Ford and Dodge, they're just totally blowed out of the water, where, I mean, he said eight thousand dollars difference right off the top.
So, I'm gonna ask you, is there something you would use different on, if you could switch something from your, for, looking at it, so.
Well, they, that's what they're doing, they're switching now to go into a flatbed with toolboxes instead of the utility box on the back end, right?
Right, and getting rid of the extended cab, where we're only short, getting into a shorter wheelbase for turning.
And you feel that would fit, that would fit you best?
For, for, yes, for that.
Well, I, I think we should go ahead and.
By the four fifty?
Two four fifty.
Is that a motion?
I'd pick that motion.
Is there a second?
One second.
We'll call.
Hold on here, hold a second, let's confirm what's, what's going on when we, when we look, when we look at the pricing, then, uh. Just, so, right, just on page three in the memo, pricing on this, would, so it'd be a four to a four fifty, the pricing was sixty-one five, the price that we have in, in the package, which came from, from, uh, ABM, I think, but, uh, Carroll Ford honored that same price?
Yes.
Okay, so would that be to per, the, most.
I, I would stay local if I were you.
To purchase, uh, the four fifty from Carroll Ford?
We'll call.
Okay, Wolman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Warner.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
There you go, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
Um, yeah.
You wanna do the, the job descriptions for the administrator search?
Yeah, I guess my, my first question to the council is that Elizabeth is available to, uh, to be on Zoom, if, if you would like, uh, she just said text her when, when we were ready, and she'd be available, would you like to be able to interact with Elizabeth?
I just know she asked about it when we were doing our interview, when John and I went, she asked about it, that's all I'm saying.
Guys, the, well, just the email today was, you know, we're gonna talk through this profile, and, and make sure that, that everybody's on board with that, and if there's any changes to it, she would need the final, final revisions of the, uh, of the profile, but, uh.
Thank you.
Text her and say that we're ready. And then we will, we'll talk about the job descriptions here first, before we get too much into the profile.
And then, you know, I never did see, maybe she did send someone, but, you know, I didn't see the general consensus what come back from it, did she do a report on that?
Yes.
But this is the job description, but, you know.
Yeah, this, this is the, so she'll refer to this as a physician profile.
Okay.
And then these three things that I, that I prepared, they would be the job descriptions.
Okay, so I guess my question is, you know, it's, in that thing, we, in that meetings or interviews or whatever, we talked about, you know, the deputy, what is it called? Give me the proper term. We have a city administrator, a city clerk, and a deputy city clerk, or they go with the same, I don't know what everybody else's opinions was for that stuff.
Sure.
Right, did, did, did anybody see a report like that?
Not, not from Liz.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
Um, other than the discussion about these three job descriptions, so, that, that's taking a city clerk, a city clerk administrator job description, breaking that out into a city administrator, and a city clerk position, and then this shows a third position, which we call the utility billing clerk.
Okay.
And, uh, really just breaking out duties, then, uh, as far as, as who would be doing what, um, so this was, was sent out to you over the weekend, and we had a chance to take a look at it, but then Kay and I went through this today about, about any potential changes, had, had a couple of, uh, really minor additions, uh, to the utility billing clerk, uh, description more than anything else, so, the, uh, the administrator and the, and the city clerk one were okay with staff giving no, no revisions on that, so we would open that up for, for the council, you know, with your discussion on that, is that the way that you were, were really looking at this, that you have an administrator and a city clerk, and then a third person, then, as, as a deputy or utility billing clerk?
I don't know, I, I.
Is that the question you're asking?
Yes, question, looking for the council input on that.
Yeah, it's kinda like your vision, right?
That, for me, it was envisioning something, because we get dinged on our audit.
Right.
We know that Scott, in the previous role as the city administrator, has not had the time to get everything done, so we need to add something, we talked about that at some meetings, but I don't know if that's what everybody else was thinking, and I don't know, when John and I met with Liz.
Right, Liz.
Yes.
Uh, you know, we talked about that, and that the new administrator would be able to have more time, because the deputy clerk, or the city clerk, would be able to do some administrator calls, and then we'd have the next person come in, that would be the, I guess we're gonna call it billing clerk, if that's the term for using them.
So this, this would be Liz entering on, on just.
Is this, is it, that billing clerk a full-time position or a part-time? I'm just.
I don't know, I think, I still think it's up in the air, you know, it's, it's at least a part-time position, but, but I mean, it should be part-time.
Yeah, cause what I read in it, you had her answering the phone, greeting the customers, and.
Him or her.
Him or her, excuse me.
Hello there, Liz.
So, yeah, I, I didn't know if it was part-time or full-time, or, you know, you, you started adding full-time, then you're talking benefits, and.
Sure.
Yep.
Uh, we're just really getting to the, the point in the meeting, then, Liz, where we were discussing, uh, uh, the breakout of, of job responsibilities, then, between the administrator and the clerk, and then also looking at a, a utility billing clerk of, of some sort, so that's where, where we are in the discussion.
Okay. Okay, I will send in.
Yeah, so, so we, when John and I were there, we just discussed a little bit of it, you know, how, I guess you'd say the format might change, like we're talking about, but I don't know what, I don't know who was with who, the other ones, uh, what you guys talked about, what your format thought.
Well, I expressed that we need, I mean, administrator needs to get, be able to get out into the field more, and. Again, Scott's plate was full inside, you know, and we needed more persons making sure the projects were done, you know, and, and supervising the employees, and. I mean, that, he's administrator over that.
And I think one thing we talked about, John, correct me if I'm wrong, she, Liz asked us about Kay moving to that role, and that we'd be willing to center this, whatever, classes or whatever, you know, but, you know, I would never talk to Kay on that.
Pick up the slack.
Well, because some of that stuff that's, if, if we're promoting Kay to that city clerk position, I get my terms, right? There's gonna be some stuff that she's gonna do, that Scott was doing, that she might need brushed up, does that make sense, or educated, right?
Or some training of some sort.
Training of some sort, not saying that, I'm not, I'm not against that, I'm just making sure that we're all on the same page, thinking what we're going forward, I, for some reason, had it in my head, Liz was going to present us with a couple of different options, but I didn't see that, because we don't know what you guys all talked about. I know what John and I talked about.
Can you talk that through a little bit, Liz, about what, what you got for, for feelings from all, all of these, uh, groups that you talked to, mainly the mayor and council, about those different meetings, and, uh, what their thoughts were on, uh, allocation of job duties, and, I know we had talked about, about splitting the, the administrator and, and the clerk, but what was just the general, um, the general response from folks as you're meeting with them?
Yeah, actually, it was, um, I mean, not to say we voted, because that's an illegal meeting, even if we did, but, and I got the, every single one of the elected officials said that they were open to splitting those duties between the city administrator and the city clerk, and that was after review of, um, of the survey that I had provided, so, there was, you know, for me, there was no, we didn't talk about the deputy city clerk position, or having a utility billing person as well, we only talked about whether or not, you know, everyone was open to splitting the duties between a city clerk and a city administrator, so, once I kind of had, once I had, um, kind of a consensus of the council, um, but, you know, then I had said something to you, Scott, that, hey, maybe you wanna start putting together, helping put the draft of the, of the two job descriptions together, but, um, after meeting with each one of the elected officials, that was, it was everyone, the mayor and all council members said, yes, I'm open to that, I'd like to see what the job descriptions look like, and, and that's what you have in front of you, I believe.
Yeah, and so, so I did, I guess I don't really wanna muddy the water or anything, cause I, I'm the person who threw out this third one about a utility billing, but just understanding that
Yeah.
if you're splitting these duties, you gotta, you gotta come up with a third person.
But we, we have talked about that previously, like you're trying to bail set, um, because that was satisfying, but, also.
That does help, and it just helps out with workload.
Yeah. Segregation of duties is a requirement.
So, what we need to do is, number one, approve these, is what you're saying, and then, we gotta decide where we're at financially on this.
Yep, so.
When we do this.
Um, a cou- couple things that I, I'll ask the council for, is to, to approve job descriptions, make sure that everybody's on board with, with the notion of, of these job descriptions and splitting the administrator and the, and the clerk, would go ahead and include then approval of the, uh, what we call the utility billing clerk. That would, that would be just one standalone motion, second, uh, thing that we'll get into, then, is the, the review of this, uh, position profile, and that gets into the financial side of things then for the city administrator.
So I got, I got a question for you, does Kay have a chance to look at this?
Okay.
I looked at it this morning.
And you're okay with it?
Yeah, we made a few revisions, but, but otherwise, yeah, we, we agree on it.
And then, so, if we did something like this, I'm asking you guys, you two, uh, so Scott's got his office, and the new administrator would be over at Scott's office, would we utilize Bill's office to the other person, for like where you would sit, or would we make another office back behind, or, I think the coffee pot's that gradual?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, or, I mean, have you thought, I'm just asking you.
My, my thought would be, if the new, um, utility supervisor, you know, used the, Bill's office like they normally did, then we would utilize the back office and just rearrange that and clear that out, so that it would be functional for another office.
Okay.
Otherwise, yeah, you could use the old utility office, it's just, the new utility supervisor may need that space for themselves.
But that's all something, you know, if we decide all this, that we decided and talked about.
We, there's room, we can make it work.
I have a question on the city clerk, is that an hourly or a salary position, then?
You can have, have that discussion, um, and, when Kay and I have talked about that, about the potential, uh, promotion to be city clerk, still be anticipated to be an hourly position. So what's your, I guess what, any, any comments on these three job descriptions?
I've not read through it, so I'm sorry, I'm slower here.
Okay. All right.
Is this something you wanna decide tonight, or do we have time to look through it, and?
I think maybe, we're gonna need to throw a, a city administrator job, uh, description out there, you'll, you'll want that to, uh,
So she can.
to be approved, so you can recruit off of that, but, uh.
We're throwing these down the road for the next meeting.
So, if we collectively as a council think that the process is correct, like we're all in favor of administrator, city clerk, and, uh, billing clerk, we can have time to review these and define them job descriptions, correct?
Well, it's the administrator one you want out right away.
Right.
Get that one out.
We have to, we have to approve that.
And just remove the, the city clerk items out of that.
So, I'm, I'm thinking of this, get the city main one out, then, I think we need to have a special meeting after we go through this, that we can make some, instead of wait three weeks, maybe have it in.
We'd have one next week.
You know, on Mon- Monday night, and go with that, I mean, that gives us an opportunity to, to determine what it, this billing clerk, do we want it full-time?
Part-time.
Part-time, I'm not, I'm not sure about that, I wanna read all the duties and then see what could happen, so, I.
Yeah, I just think we need to move on this one.
So, and we can, we can go ahead and move on this concept, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was.
Yeah, we can move on that one.
Yeah, I agree with that.
But we also have to approve this.
Say, yeah, if you could approve the concept in the, in the city administrator job description.
Right.
Okay, so I'll make that a motion.
Wh- wh- can we edit part of this yet? I, I got a question, it says that, um, the city.
Which one are you looking at?
City administrator. Has to live within ten air miles, I think if city administrator is getting paid what they're gonna. Has to live within ten air miles. I think if city administrator is getting paid what they're gonna get paid, they certainly can afford a house in Lakeview, and I think they need to be invested in our community. I mean, we're talking taxes and whatnot, and, you know, if they aren't in the community, people might balk at that, that they're not really invested into this community, it's just a job. I would like to strike that part of it out, say they have to live within the city limits.
What's what's that do for recruiting, something like that?
Or within a couple of miles, like if they wanted to be on an acreage right outside of town.
Um, I'm, you know, you could go a lot of different ways with residency. Um, I've seen, you know, I've seen within thirty miles, I've seen within, um, I mean, if you wanted to cast a wider net on people in the region that would be qualified and would look to live at Lakeview, um, then, you know, then you could, you could be more lenient on that. If if you're, I've seen it where they are requiring you to live in the city limits and, you know, it's not uncommon. So you could go either way with it, um, I, you could go either way with it. Now is the time to do it, though. If you're gonna do that, then we need to get it on the advertisement and we need to change it on the job description.
Isn't.
Cause right now, right now, I just copied it from the job description that you already had in place.
And we don't wanna, we do or don't wanna state preference given to somebody that lives in the city limits, correct?
Oh, I wouldn't say it that way. I would just say if you are required to live within the city limits, if you, there is a residency requirement.
And, you know, if.
Or you live within ten miles or thirty miles or within the county, I've seen that, where they live within SAC County and you could go that route too. So there's lots of ways, but whatever you do, you know, you wanna have consensus of the council on making that that change and putting it, then I will put it in the advertisement and you'll wanna change it on the job description as well.
Well, if there's an acreage just outside the town, I'd take that.
What does that do to our pool though, if you, um, just narrow it down to the city? I mean, does that hurt us from getting applicants, or it doesn't hurt us at all, or what?
Well, I mean, you could maybe get more applicants potentially if you did that, if you were open to it. I wouldn't change your mind after you get all the applications and then say, no, you have to live here, because then you're changing the, you know, the scope of that, but, um, but, you know, again, I don't think it'll hurt you. I mean, it's a beautiful community and it's not uncommon that people have to live in a town that they are required.
I I like the idea of them having a vested interest in the community.
Well, if if it's not in the city limits, if it, I don't know how to word it as far as, uh, mailing address, I mean, the.
I I think it should be in the city limits. Yes, I think.
I can word it for you. I think what I would just recommend, if you're gonna go that route, is to just make sure it says that they have to live within Lakeview, within say, uh, say six months of of employment, give them some time to find a place.
Find a place.
And then, and then also put language in there that says, um, unless agreed upon by the parties. So then say your person starts working and they're working with a realtor and there's one house on the market and they're just, it's out of their price range, that you can say, we understand and we're gonna give you some more time. Um, and that, you know, of course, you don't wanna hold it against them that they're they're looking, so you know that they're looking, right? So, I mean, nobody wants to sign a contract when it says six months, that's it. So if you put a little language in there that says for upon, you know, or agreed upon by the parties, that gives you some time to give them to find a home that suits their family.
Yeah, I like that idea.
So that's what I, that's what I've done too. So I can do that and I can provide that language for you.
Could that language say like, uh, council's discretion, or something like that?
Agreed upon by both the parties. So you have a party, you have the person that, that's usually how it is. I mean, you could ask your attorney, but that's usually how you say it, is what's agreed upon by by the parties.
Judy, go ahead.
I can understand the timing and I could go along with that, but I would like to say, if you don't care enough and don't like the city enough to live in it, why would you even wanna be an administrator?
True, but thank you.
I I have just.
I think if.
Just second. Vicki, go ahead.
So the the job description that you're gonna have, is it broad enough then, that if you don't hire this third person, that that like the added duties for Kay aren't, are in there? I mean, I guess I'm just wondering about that. Or is the job description you've already, by the job description itself, you've already decided that you've got three employees?
The the motion would approve that concept, about about three.
Based on this job description for the administrator? That's what I wondered about.
So, so I'll make that motion with the change of that language in there.
The residency.
Residency.
Agreed upon by those parties.
Right.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz.
Yes, you bet.
So, is that clear?
Yes, so it's, the the motion that Dave asked here is to approve the concept of of these three positions, approve the city administrator job description with requiring the residency within six months within the city limits unless agreed upon by both parties.
For an extension.
Yeah.
Yeah, for an extension.
You have a second.
Second.
We'll call.
Okay, Wolman.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Frank.
Yes.
Beckman.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, so that would be item number one, then, and item number two would be to talk through the nice colorful position profile. I'm just gonna correct a, correct an error in in here before they get into anything particular about about the content. So Liz, just in the education part, um,
Yeah.
it says that SAC City is just ten miles, that's to the north of Lakeview. And then, talk about community colleges in, there is one in in Carroll, and then there's one at Fort Dodge, but Fort Dodge is like sixty miles, so.
Oh, okay, maybe we oughta.
Not a thirty minute statement, yeah.
Okay, so maybe we oughta eliminate that off there.
Yeah.
Or can you say, or say sixty miles, I guess, but, okay.
And then also in the churches, you have Auburn as a Catholic church, and they are no longer, there's one, there's one in Early.
That one's closed.
Okay.
So, yeah, the Holy Consecrations.
Holy Consecrations.
Are the ones that are, have all regularly holding mass.
Any other changes? Maybe you wanna go page by page, and I will take any edits at this time, or um, I did talk to Scott about this, if you wanna even hand him your edits and you maybe talk through them and then hand them to him, then I can get those from him and get this updated for you for advertising tomorrow. So either either way, how you wanna go about editing this document?
Maybe, Liz, if you got a few minutes, let's just work through this kind of page by page here.
Okay, perfect.
Cause I I don't know that there's a whole lot of changes. I thought it was, the information's great, I just wanna make sure that everybody's on board with with what the the content is and
Great.
and the priorities.
Great, great, okay, let's let's do that.
Should it say Hancock Concrete Products, or should it say Old Castle?
Yeah, just, so in the major employer section, Liz, it says Hancock Concrete Products there. They've since been bought out by Old Castle.
Old Castle, okay. Okay.
So, page two, just that campus is within sixty miles, we might change it to that, or?
Yeah, on the.
On the Fort Dodge.
Yep, on Fort Dodge, just make sure references sixty minutes on the education.
Fort Dodge, sixty minutes, okay.
Um, the churches again, taking out Auburn.
Okay.
On health and wellness, there was a comment about, uh, we have an optometrist in town here, if you'd add optometrist.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Got it.
So police, police is right there, chief with three full-time and one part-time. And twenty-five volunteers with the fire department, that's right.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it should be EMS.
Yeah, so I guess that's a question for you, Liz, in regards to EMS, the city does not provide EMS services, the county service. So so do you often mention anything like that?
We sure can. So the county, the county manages the emergency management, emergency services?
Yeah, the ambulance services, basically, yeah.
Manages emergency services, okay.
One, um, unit based here in Lakeview and one in SAC, but.
Okay.
It's just, that really is another benefit that we we house a ambulance service here in town.
Okay. Got it.
Anything in the library section or anything put into the parks and rec section?
We have a excellent library board. You are smooth.
Yeah, you could say we're on the libraries in the top tier and state. Yeah.
So they, and they are, yes, certified library, top tier.
Yeah.
Um, on the parks and recreation part, it's just that our our biggest event of the year is not mentioned there as far as the Black Hawk Lake Summer Water Carnival. But.
Oh, sure. The summer, the summer carnival?
Black Hawk Lake Summer Water Carnival, yeah. That's our, that's our biggest, uh, our biggest event of the year.
Okay, I'll add that to that.
Okay. All right, then, on page five, it starts to talk about governance.
Yes.
Anything on the governance or those initiatives that were identified? Say, I'm not sure how you do this, Liz, and how you really highlight that a little bit more, but the the electric utility is a is a big component of our city, and the.
I did, I did add that. I added it to, um, I think it's like the second paragraph, um, under the position, um,
Great.
position page, it's like on the very top of
Yep.
talking about the position, I think it might be the next page.
Great, yep, thank you.
I liked how you said it, so I just used your words.
All right. Anything on that then, about the, about the position? How about page seven then, on the specific traits identified?
Graduate from some high schools, that, we sure as well get past that, don't we?
Um, yeah, so you look at the education then, so, you know, that's that's the way things read in that job description too, the requirement is graduate preparation from high school. But then it does have a preference for for an advanced degree like a bachelor's degree.
Bachelor's degree is preferred.
Yeah, just change that residency then into compensation and benefits part there, Liz, about residency, city limits within the city.
Yeah, so, and, um, and just remind me, or maybe just browse over those benefits, are they all applicable to Lakeview? Um, I wanted to make sure that those were accurate.
Uh, yes, they, that is, they're correct.
Okay, great. Great.
And then timeline on the bottom of the page?
I like that, July.
July, yes. That looks good, nice and aggressive.
It's very aggressive, very aggressive timeline. So with all of your changes, um, folks tonight, then I will um, get these changes made this evening and send it back to to Scott with, um, and it sounds like Scott will just be updating the the job description.
Yep.
And then, um, and then we will, uh, I'll just give him a little instruction on how to get that launched on the website. Once it's on the website, then I will take it from there and get it out to other sources. But once it, that's kind of where it needs to start, once it's on the website, then we all can, you know, set it on to people, the ClerkNet, the Grapevine, and all those other places and and just have it go from there, and and, um, people will be going to your website and to to see the extra documents and the job descriptions and so forth from there. So, um, so that's the next step. It'll be advertised tomorrow and once I see that, and then, um, the due date will be Feb, or excuse me, June second.
Perfect.
Sounds like a plan.
Sounds like a plan. And then for the personnel committee, um, if I could just get confirmation that we could meet at city hall at, say, five o'clock, five o'clock on June fifth, would that work? Six o'clock? Yeah? Would that work for the committee?
I.
I know what. I know one was gonna be gone, either way, but.
So, yeah, Dale is not gonna be here, yeah, you know.
We need to get somebody else.
Why?
I, I can, see them. Whoever wants to, because we should have two.
At least two, yeah. I'm not so sure, shouldn't do all four in two different sessions, but I apologize, I did not change that.
So it's what date?
June fourth or fifth.
Uh, June fifth is a Monday, I believe.
So we've got a council meeting at seven, so what if we just move, bump that up to six? And we'll have the whole council.
Sure, we'll probably.
Or is that?
Um, oh.
No.
Oh, I, 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 um, you want the whole council to review all the job, the applications and?
No, no.
All right, and that personnel committee, no?
Oh, you'd have to have a closed session.
Yeah, otherwise, no.
I'll sit in on the committee, Dale's not gonna be here.
I would, is there any way we can, the whole council can see the applications though?
Why, why not?
How's that, how's that work?
Um, that we just have, you just have to, you'd have to go to closed session and I would have to get authorization from each one of the applicants
Can you, can you, can you email out all the applicants, just everybody?
But we can do, but we can do that.
Well, not, maybe not even that far, Liz, just.
Oh, app, no, no, no.
Yeah, you wouldn't.
No, because they're confidential, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Well, that's fine, I mean, just don't worry.
But, I mean, again, I can bring, we can do it, and I have done this for a city, so, um, we can do it. And I would just require on the, on the profile that they also provide that written authorization, or once I pick their application, I would have to quickly turn, oh gosh, you guys, I don't know how that would work, because um, I could be getting applications, say, up to that Friday, and I'd have to say, all right, well, I need this signed too, real fast, because we're gonna look at them on Monday. I mean, it could, we could maybe get it done, but, um, if an applicant doesn't sign that and get it back to me right away, we won't be able to consider them.
Well, I, I.
So that's kind of messy, but that's why I kind of want to work with the, a committee, because it just, then we don't have to do closed session and, and get that authorization ahead of time.
Right. Well, that makes sense, I, I'm okay with that.
I can do it, but we, I just, I just don't want to miss somebody if we do, you know, it gets a little messy.
We don't want to make it any harder than it has to be. We don't want to complicate things.
I'm willing to do whatever you guys want to do, I just, you know, again, we just might miss somebody if they don't turn it around quickly and provide that authorization, but, but, um. But if you're okay with naming an alternate for this meeting, um, you know, you'll get an update in your council meeting, I'm sure, right?
Yep.
You could, you just can't talk names, you can just talk numbers and keep it very open and vague like that, general.
Well, it sounds like we just still do the committee and Mike, but just take his place.
Mike, but he's the alternate.
Yeah. Everybody's okay with that, that's what we need.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, so I will plan to be there at six o'clock on June the fifth.
Yep.
And you can surprise me who the alternate is, and we'll, we'll be ready with the applications, but, um, so Scott will be in touch tomorrow then with these changes.
Yeah, all right, sounds great.
Thank you.
All right, Liz.
Jay-Z.
I think that's probably about it. Anything else?
All right.
That should be good, thank you, Liz.
For me.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Good night.
Tonight. Okay, we've got an appointment interim city clerk.
We're gonna have a discussion on that.
Okay.
More about the notion of, of appointing, would we appoint an interim clerk, or would you just appoint a city clerk, effective as of the, the third of June?
Well, we already agreed to this concept, so if we appoint Kay as a city clerk, as a, as the, what'd you say, the?
Well, it's a question of whether we, you'd have an interim clerk while the, while you're working through this hiring process, or, or if you just know that it's going down the road, that you can just promote Kay to clerk as of the third of, of June.
But could you do that without the official job description? Because we haven't approved that yet.
Yeah, you may want to, you may want to hold off.
So. Give her those duties, but then we also have to talk about giving her that pay increase because of the additional responsibilities.
Those are fair.
And then, then as soon as we're comfortable with it, we could offer her that position.
Sure. But, you know, we've had some discussions that, with, with Kay, and, of course, Kay's more than capable of just stepping right in there and handling things, I think. Um, and we listed this in, in the council back about if you point Kay to be interim city clerk, there's a, a suggestion recommendation that the interim wage would be thirty dollars an hour, you see Kay's at twenty-three something now?
Where did that suggestion come from?
From me, Kay, from you, it's.
It was a discussion between us.
The only reason I'm asking is because Liz gave us the averages and the median for that city clerk position, and that's way higher than that.
Well, and that's, I wanted, that's why I wanted to have to talk about interim versus permanent then too, when the, when the promotion comes, I would certainly suggest there's another big bump that might come along with it.
So you're saying even the, that the thirty's already considerably higher than the city clerk average than you want to give her?
And what you're saying, it's higher than the average, yeah?
Yeah.
It's considerably higher. Well, these are the numbers that we got from Liz, and she emailed it back to everybody today when I asked.
Yeah, I got, I got that, I got that one.
No offense to you, Kay.
No, it's just, you know, you also know that when they hired the city clerk from SAC City two years ago, or whatever, they hired her thirty-one dollars an hour.
Yeah, SAC City has a population of two thousand sixty-three.
I understand, that is just, you know, they don't necessarily have the electric like we do and.
They got gas. I'm just saying we've got to be very mindful of what we're doing. Not saying she's not working, just saying we've got to be mindful of what we're doing.
Are we gonna have a special meeting once we approve these duties for city clerk and utility ability clerk?
And maybe the street sweeper.
And they'll, it's basically, yeah.
Do we also under, do we, um. If she's, if she starts, let's say, as an interim. Do we have an idea of how many hours she's gonna get in? As a city clerk, how many hours it's gonna be averaging?
All day.
Well.
Is it forty or is it fifty?
Well, I mean, she's gonna have some night work, like for the council meeting, stuff like that, so what I'm saying is what would be the average hours that we're talking about, hey, her, since it's thirty dollars an hour.
I have a question, so, because I'm confused about what you guys are talking about. Are you talking about her position, but then are you still gonna have an interim city administrator or not?
Oh, we'll get to that point too, yes.
Yeah, oh, I just was confused.
Yeah, the, the, the biggest purpose of the interim city clerk is that we're required to have a city clerk, you know, it, it's just a state requirement that we gotta have a city clerk, somebody needs to hold that position.
And was your old position city administrator slash city clerk?
Yeah. I like the idea of breaking them down though, between the three.
Yeah, I'm.
I really do.
I think, but I, I think we've benefited everybody. But, yeah. If you're going to have a special meeting to talk about approving the two job descriptions. And three job.
Well, we already did that.
And then the streets we've, after we get that stuff back from that guy, you know, that's one or whatever.
But for the time being, we need to decide if we're gonna do thirty dollars an hour for interim.
Well, I think we need to look over the job description.
If you're in a special meeting, I mean, it could be a little special.
Special meeting, okay.
So, and then have you guys talked, and I guess more of the question for you, and maybe you answered this earlier, is it, do you definitely want it by the hour or a salary position?
Well, we just discussed by the hour based on, normally, you know, a supervisor type position is exempt, in this case, you're only supervising perhaps one full-time or part-time person. So you're not really supervising multiple people where you would be, you know, following that exempt category, but you could.
And then the other question, will you want, and you don't have to answer it now, but you have a copy of these job descriptions, I think it'd be very helpful for us to know what your opinion is on that billing clerk position, if it should be full, full-time or part-time?
Personally, I think it could easily be a full-time job. Um, you'd look at part-time if, if it were somebody like me and that's all you were doing, and you'd been doing it for twenty years, and you knew, you know, the thing by heart, and you knew everything that needed to be done. But when you're bringing somebody in and, and training them and putting them into that position, it's gonna take them more than just part-time to get everything done and, and get it taken care of.
I didn't read the, I mean, do you envision that person sitting where you sit today?
I do.
Doing the computer, being that front base person?
Yeah, and, and you know, that, that job is, is all day, every day, I mean, there are people in all day, every day, bringing payments and, you know, the locates coming through and asking for assistance and work orders and. Obviously, if you have them only there in the morning, then somebody else in the afternoon is gonna have to fill in all of those job duties.
And then you're switching desks all the time.
Then you're switching desks all the time. Yep.
You also could stay open during the mid-hour too.
Even stagger your shifts so that you're, yep, not close that half hour like we are now.
That's what we do.
I mean, that, that way somebody's got something, gets some time off their job, they can run off to the city hall or something.
Yep, yep, yep.
Everybody's comfortable with that?
So is it that we would look to have a special meeting? Next, next Monday work for everybody?
It doesn't work for me, but I don't think we're hurt.
Me?
It's the following Monday.
Following Monday.
Memorial Day.
Yeah, Memorial Day.
That should be, I, I'll, I tried to schedule board adjustment these days.
Yeah, you did.
Let's try next Monday, then we can sort through this.
Right.
Special meeting on the twenty, and I can read through the, the job descriptions and give any input back.
That's what I was gonna say, head down with you.
If that's all right.
Well, if it serves as a way of.
Um, special meeting then on twenty-second, seven o'clock.
Okay. Twenty-three, twenty-six is approved by Daniel John Gibson.
Yeah. I do have a resume on you, so. Yeah, just, just that, that, you know, I guess Dale personally, I've been, been with John, I worked, worked with John years and years ago, John was the, the public works director at Glen when I was there. And then before I left, he had left to become the public works director again, Lockheed.
Right.
Where he stayed until then he retired. During.
So he was a public works director in Lockheed, not a city administrator?
That's true, no, during, understanding that, uh, when you get to these big cities, that those department head positions become administrative jobs.
Yeah, so.
But, and, but he had served in his, as interim city administrator in Lockheed during one of their change orders.
Okay, so. During this timeframe, who, if he would, so you're comfortable that he can do what you were doing with Kay's assistance for the packets, the budget stuff, making sure stuff is being spent? Are we, I just want to make sure I'm understanding what's going on here, and are we still gonna also have Nancy as well?
A little bit, so it's talking to.
What's the, what's the reasoning for both?
Just that John wouldn't necessarily, uh, focus on the financial side of things, that Nancy would have a lot more specifics on that, but it would just be special, special, that type of stuff if we need Nancy, so, end of fiscal year stuff, you know, that we would have, have her be able to, uh, to come help change, uh, work through that transition at the end of the fiscal.
We see it more as a, as that and then calling with questions than actually having her in the office and sitting there doing work.
But we only call her when we need her.
Exactly.
So we're actually using the, if I say this the right way, if I'm understap, right, we're using, uh, John's expertise on the public work side of things, street side of things, electric side of things, and then we're using Nancy's expertise on the, on the financial side of things?
Yeah, I mean, but maybe not even so much, we, we would not be using Nancy nearly as much.
No, because, you know, with, with June thirtieth being fiscal year end.
Right.
And me not having done that before, um, we just thought it would be helpful to get her expertise on that, but after that, you don't have a whole lot of, of those things you're gonna need to be doing before the new administrator is hired.
Good. I just want to make sure I'm understanding.
John's duties consist of what?
A lot of, a lot of project related stuff, so he'd, he'd still be working, working on projects and project closeout on, on these water main projects, and, and still being his, his forte is the public work stuff. And, and during the interim, while we're without a, a public, uh, utility superintendent, it just works great, you know, that, that we would have his outside administrative knowledge then too. You know, but, um, when, when it looks at, at planning and zoning, the board, board adjustment, those, those types of issues would fall with John as the interim.
Good, I understand.
And, uh, like I would, would have suggested, when you go through the interview process for your, for your new utility superintendent, I think it'd be great to have John involved with that.
Because of his experience in what he was doing?
Yeah. Yep.
And did that eighty dollar an hour figure come from?
From him.
From John?
Yeah. Yes, that, uh, that's his sample, that's his sample agreement from when he, we tweaked one that had been a, an agreement for an interim public works director in Grinnings, was his, was his last stint. Whereas.
So we need a motion to move forward?
Motion to approve that.
Twenty-three, twenty-six.
Resolution, yeah? Uh, I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
We'll call. What will be the starting?
He can be available on Wednesday, and we'll get him in here to, to do some duties here while, while I'm around and do some training.
And it does say in here he needs several days off.
Several days, it's several days off.
Without pay.
Yeah.
Well, he's only paid while he's here.
Right, right, but them days he's not available.
Oh, okay.
And he's, it says in here that he gets paid holidays while he's.
Yeah, that's a stipulation, he, he gets paid holidays while he's here, so that's, uh.
Oh, and he does, the Fourth of July holiday.
And potentially more, Fourth of July, but for sure.
Okay, no other, further, no more other business?
We better, we better take a vote on that.
Oh, I thought you did that.
Yeah, but, and then I do want to ask what more?
Okay. We'll call then.
Okay, Declan?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
More?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
More?
You had in here, and I think this probably should have been under your report, the, um, change order request.
Oh, yeah.
Can you update me on these change order requests, Jack might know more about too? Involves the relocation of the tapping sleeve and valve connection due to condition of existing water main at the location of proposed connection, this change order request is thirty-four dollars, is that what they moved the fire hydrant?
No.
This is, they, where they tapped the, tapped the, the main up by Dan's house. And just that, the, the main had become compressed and oval, more like an egg shape in this area where they were gonna make the tap, and it needed to be round. So they moved it, I don't know how many feet, but, but they had to move.
Four, five feet to the south.
They had moved the tap. Now, the other thing I pointed out is, is that these are requests from them, and, and BK is, is analyzing the request, they've not been, not been recommended to us yet to be.
Okay.
To be change orders.
The guy that comes with taps, which is Rod Claver, I think did that one, if I'm right, Rod did that one?
Yeah, I believe so.
He said absolutely no way, no how, well, he touched that oval like that.
Because it had a bow in there or something, wasn't it? He wouldn't, he wouldn't up to a bow.
Yeah, it was, it's kind of bow, the water lines kind of bowed like that, so then there'd be a pig.
So then there's a change order request number three, to relocate the connection to the existing water main on Jackson Street.
Yeah.
Connection was moved due to encounter an unknown storm pipe culvert in conflict with the original line of the water main.
Yeah, so that, that did happen, they had to slide the connection, I heard it's solid, I believe, then, is that what they did?
Yeah.
That, anyway, they, they got, they got to digging in there and encountered this storm.
So where's change order number two?
There's, there's change order number two and change order number four requests, which will not be proposed to be done.
Are them moving the fire hydrants?
Yeah, one of them was, one of them dealt with fire.
So our engineer had the fire hydrants in the ditch.
Ditch.
Well, that's on the other one, though, that's the evac.
It's on this one too.
Up there too?
Yes.
Nobody could figure out why they put the ditch, even the contractors had done it wrong.
Um, out here on the evac line, why aren't they replacing the tiles underneath the driveways?
Because, because there's extra charge when they do that, like, they're, they had to replace one, they had to replace one, and they have put in a, a change order request for, uh, for this additional pipe that, that they replaced under one of the, under one of the driveways.
Isn't that part of the contract though?
No, it was, the contract was to reuse what was there, was to not disturb.
But the DOT requires them to put some special on top of the tiles.
So they disturbed, so the contract was do not disturb, and they disturbed them, because they wanted to go down the center of the ditch, because it made it easier for them instead of going around the side, and that's why they tore them up.
Yeah, I noticed that one on the west side of Krause's out there retains water without that culvert in there.
Okay.
It does.
Not much, but it does.
We haven't got much rain. Wait till you get a ten year term.
It'll run over the top if, I mean.
Right.
Then we'll cut, then we'll cut the driveway.
It'll work right away out in a heartbeat.
It'll work right away out in a heartbeat.
Driveways west of.
On the west side of Krause's, they're going into Hoag's Fields.
Yeah, between Krause's and Hoag's driveways.
There's puddle of water, we didn't get much rain, it's still puddling. Mm-hmm.
The water never used to stand there before.
No.
Alright.
And they will clean up all that stuff yet, right?
Absolutely.
All that, right?
Absolutely, and, uh, and they got to come, come do all the cleanup and everything up at school yet too, they.
I'm just gonna bring that up, he called me in about five fifteen tonight, asking how much rain we had, he's gonna send a guy from Minnesota this way tomorrow. To start doing cleanup up around the school.
Right.
And get that ready to seed.
We need to do something right there west of Bill Riley's, the kids are parking in that hole and.
Bill was, Bill was in complaining about that today too, he said we did at least get some barricades up there around, so that they can't park there then.
Um, he kids.
Yep.
Second?
Muddy.
Pardon?
Muddy.
Yeah.
Dave, you second it? Meeting adjourned, thanks everybody.